Okay, we're gonna go and call the community of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 7th at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Stark.
Here.
Chancet.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley. Uer.
Here.
Seron.
Here.
And McFadden.
Okay, we do have eight of the fourteen aldermen present, so we do have a quorum. Next item will be item two. Items removed, added, or changed. We do wanna add under seven A, we'll call it ongoing, it's an executive session for ongoing litigation. Shouldn't take very long, and there obviously won't be anything coming out of it, but we need an update from our city administrator on something. So then, we're gonna move on to item number three, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Come on up and use the mic. Give us your name, please.
Good evening. My name's Joe Knopp. I live at 511 O'Zier Drive. I wanted to take this opportunity to come out and publicly thank the city council for what you do. I've heard recently that there's over a thousand people that wanna change the way things are done here, and the room's empty. Where are they? They want more oversight of our government, but they don't take time out of their day to come in here and give oversight of our government. You folks are here, you're very transparent with everything that goes on. I understand executive session litigation, that stuff, we'll hear about that eventually. But if you're gonna demand changes of your government, be more transparent than the government you're trying to change. I don't think you hear enough thank-yous. You hear all the negatives on Facebook. Nobody will come out and make an intelligent argument or have an open debate with you about anything. They just sit on their computers and gripe. I wanted to come out tonight and say thank you. That, and there's a mid-year report that I've been waiting to hear all year. Glad you're here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, there is nobody else in the public that would like to address us, so we'll move on then to item number four, which is discussion on the community development workload. And Laura Newman is our city administrator, you're gonna handle that, right?
Yes. So I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. As you know, this, there were two positions, two new positions that were put into the 2018 budget. One was for an additional police officer to serve on the North Central Narcotics Task Force, and the other was an additional member of the Community Development Department that was gonna serve in a combination inspection and code enforcement role. Shortly after the beginning of the year, when we heard that the Sam's Club was going to be closing, I, we, the staff made recommendations that we take some measures to cut back on some of the expenditures that we had planned for 2018 until we had a better idea of how the closure of Sam's Club was going to affect our budget. We now have a few months under our belt. We certainly can't say, from what we've seen, that we have a full grasp of what the impact will be. But what has become clear to me as the year goes on is that it would be a mistake for us to delay any further hiring somebody in that community development position. I have had no less than three meetings with developers of some very large projects that are going on in this city, and they're extremely anxious about the length of time that it is taking to get plans reviewed, to get inspections scheduled. And while I think it's a wonderful thing that we have numerous big projects going on in this city right now, if we are not able to provide the level of service that the developers expect us to provide, and also if we're not able to address the needs of every other citizen in the city of Batavia who would like to engage in a building project and requires a permit, then we are kinda gonna be shooting ourselves in the foot because these are all things that are bringing additional revenue to our city. When a homeowner takes the time to invest and make improvements in their property, they're increasing their property value. And so, community development is one of the areas of the city where we have the potential to generate more revenue. And so, I think it's something that is worthy of investment. And just to name a few of the huge projects that community development has currently and is anticipating very soon to require a high level of attention. Right now, we are near to providing the certificate of occupancy for our first senior living property, which is the Windmill Manor on Hawks Drive. Soon after that, we'll begin the construction of the Windmill Landings development. The Prairie Commons development is underway with 242 townhomes planned, and as well, plans have been submitted to community development for a 200 single-family home development that's gonna go in behind the Sam's Club. Oh, and that's not to mention the $40 million development that is planned for One Washington Place, that redevelopment site. And that certainly is going to be another, both high-profile and also require, be a very high demand on all the services provided by the Community Development Department. So, in light of that, I would request that, I'd like the city council's approval for staff to move forward with filling that position.
Anybody have any questions, Fuller?
Yeah, I guess one of the questions is, so I think in the IT world, we do a lot of contract to hire.
Yes.
Is there such a thing in this kind of role that because it's gonna take time for this person to ramp up, is there a way we can have contractors, like maybe doing 20% of our work? What can we do, knowing that it's gonna take a long time for this person to be a fully functioning member of staff?
That's a great question, and a simple answer is yes. Those type of arrangements do exist. Because of the workload, I would anticipate both. Bringing someone new onboard, however, just to alert you, we may also be coming to you and requesting permission to, for additional resources for third parties to contract with where there are very large projects, and there are reviews that will be over and over and over again of similar types of units. It might make sense for us to work with an outside contractor who can 100% of the time dedicate to the inspection of those types of projects.
Laura, and Jeff, and you guys might be able to better answer this. If today, we did not have, we didn't know that any of those projects were coming, just based on today's workload, how are we sitting in terms of, are we able to keep up? I think the answer, I know the answer to that is no. And so, that's why I fully support, with the projected workload, I can't even imagine our staff doing it as it is. And I know just from talking to people who wanted to move businesses into town, what our backlog has been, that we're not keeping up. And that is really doing a disservice to everyone, because we need that additional revenue in terms of more businesses. So, this is a position that pays for itself in the long run.
Ellen.
The position that we're talking about is really, I guess, in my mind, not just fulfilling the need for all these inspections and everything else, but it's also gonna be used as a different position on times when we're not that busy in that respect.
That's completely accurate. Right now, we do code enforcement in a reactionary way. I think this has come up when we were looking at our new sign ordinance, that unless somebody contacts us complaining of a code violation, we simply are not staff to be able to do an assessment of whether our codes are being adhered to.
Just, as I remember when we were discussing this at budget time, I was very much in favor of it. If I recall correctly, the position was roughly $100,000 on the budget between salary and benefits. Where are we seeing that $100,000 for this position is available? Because we obviously haven't jumped into the mid-year report yet. Are we finding that we are in good enough shape to take on this $100,000?
So, I would answer that question by saying that our numbers are looking very good, but I wanna just wait until Peggy has an opportunity to present that. So I think that we will be okay in the current year. What could happen is that perhaps the full impact of the loss of the Sam's Club revenue has not really been realized in the first half of the year, and that more of the impact could come in the second half of the year. But I think that it is less than the worst-case scenario. And so, I cannot guarantee that we wouldn't have to come up with additional funding in future years in order to retain this position, but as was stated previously, it's a position that pays for itself. The costs of not having the position are far greater.
Understood.
I'm in support of this, and anything we can do to support and encourage development and developers is great. Has anything been done, though, internally to review the process of it? I mean, is anybody looking at that, from that angle, to say, okay, how can we be more efficient, or do things in a different manner that may get things even, you know, produced faster, even with a new person? You know, that role, is it gonna come in and be as efficient as possible? Is anybody looking at that, from that angle?
So, we're always looking at opportunities to improve our processes. I would say that up to now, we haven't had the internal resources to do as in-depth of an analysis of that, but that would be a good area for additional resources to, outside resources perhaps, to assist us with an overall project like that.
It was interesting, and I normally stay far away from these things, but someone I knew was opening a shop here in town. And so, it was taking a long time to get her permit, her occupancy permit. So, I started going backwards in time with Scott and Jeff in terms of, okay, what needs to happen to get someone, you know, their occupancy permit? And there's so many different steps, and so much of it is manual, and then all of these pieces have to come together before it can be signed off on. So we started talking about, what is a better way? Can it be done via iPads? Can it be done electronically? What can happen? And so, there's definitely internal talk going on between Howard and staff, and looking at software programs that alleviate this. But you have to remember, you know, we work in the world of IT where things happen quickly. In the construction world, it's like a foreign language. And so, you know, when you've got, you're waiting for a plumbing inspector who has to crawl up and look at a gas pipe and then sign off on it, and oh, by the way, he went on vacation? This is like, it's mind-boggling to me. And there's gotta be a better way, but it's not there, quite there yet. And so, you know, my question was, well, what are other towns doing what we do? I mean, it's just, it's horrendous and slow and very laborious, but I don't know, you know, I've been looking for a better way to see what other towns do. And you don't even think about looking to a town like Chicago, because they're worse than we are. So, who's got something better? And how do you, can you throw enough money at a solution? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think one of the solutions we already talked about tonight was, if you have a situation where you have multiple units that are all very similar plans that have to be approved, and, you know, occupancy permits for each, you know, successive unit that's built, I think that's a great thing to contract out for, and then it gives our staff the flexibility to be able to do things within their own realm without having to do those simplistic things over and over and over again that eat up a lot of time. I mean, granted, it's not a simple, easy thing to do, but it takes time to go through each one of those set-up plans and approve every last thing that goes through there. And if that's something that we can hire somebody to do, that just knock all those out, that makes, I think, better for us to be able to review plans that are coming in for new developments, or all the things that they do on a regular, daily basis.
And oftentimes, developers are willing to pay a premium for those types of services which would help defray our costs.
And that was something else I was gonna bring up tonight, was, is that something that we're gonna consider moving forward? If you have somebody that comes in, say they got 200 units that they want built, or, you know, when Mooseheart comes in, are we gonna add something different to that, or give them the opportunity or the option to, you know, pay a little bit more for it, to say, okay, it's gonna take us what normally would take three weeks, we're gonna do it in a week and a half? And you're gonna pay for that.
Well, I was gonna bring that up, that not only, I mean, we've heard a lot of talk tonight about it brings revenue to the city, but we also have to remember that essentially, we're under a contractual agreement with these developers that we're talking about. When we do an amputation agreement, that's a contract between us and them.
That's right.
And it typically says in there the timeframe that we're requiring for our inspections, you know, the limit of time that we will, that we need in order to do an inspection. So, we've got that contractual agreement that we need to adhere to. We also need to respect the fact that with our existing residents and our existing businesses that wanna do some simple addition or what have you, it's a quality of service that they're currently paying taxes for. And it's a matter of kind of a quality of life, too. It's what they've come to expect, living in Batavia. They expect to be able to get that service out of it, and they should. They should expect that. So, you know, I think we have to look at it way beyond just as a revenue source, it's way more than a revenue source. It's a service that we're expected to provide. I'm very much in favor of a third-party situation in certain circumstances. I'm wondering, Laura, I think, you know, I wrote an email here a couple weeks ago about another situation, and we talked a little bit in that email about third-party. Have you had a chance to investigate any of these third-party contractors? And should, should the council here tonight say, or the committee, rather, say, let's, we support you in going forward with hiring someone and investigating the third-party? How quickly could we see some relief from this issue?
You know, I would approach it on a project basis. So, I met today with the, those developers who are just finishing up the Windmill Manor project, and we are anticipating getting rolling on the Windmill Landings project. And so, I wanna work with all, you know, all parties to put that in place. So, I'm not exactly sure if I can commit to a particular timeframe, but we need to look at the construction schedule to be sure that we engage that consultant within a sufficient period of time so that they are up to speed, so that when the inspections need to be done, they can hit the ground running.
So, if we're not looking at a third-party for the immediate relief, how are we gonna see immediate relief? Because to hire someone, bring them on, get them up to speed, in my way of looking at it, we're not gonna see any relief on these inspections that we're having issues with until next spring.
Right. And I guess I just mean that the most immediate units that are gonna come online is the Windmill Landings project, so we're gonna be working on it immediately. So, we're, we're going to get started immediately on trying to engage that outside firm.
But how are we gonna handle, you know, the fence permits or the addition permit that's taking an unusual amount of time?
So, one of the things is that we have been very wrapped up and engaged in reviewing the 84 units at Windmill Manor, and that has concluded. And so, that has created additional time for both Toby and Jeff to engage in more inspections.
That was stressing the system.
It was definitely stressing the system.
Yeah, we've been working on several large projects over the last several months, Prairie Commons being one of them, getting that site development rolling, getting the Windmill Manor project built and completion. Now, we're actually, as Laura had mentioned, we're pretty much finishing up with Windmill Manor. As a matter of fact, we are down to just punch list items. We've done finals on the entire building now, as of yesterday. And so, the relief on that is, you know, that was about two, two to three hours every day that was being taken up by that project alone. With several of those larger projects backing off a little bit, we're able to spend more time on some of the others to work on that, in addition to that. And I guess, you have to understand also, the third-party, the third-party is not gonna be, mean that we're gonna have to, we're gonna not be able to spend or have to spend any time on that project. I mean, as with any third-party consultant that you bring on, there, you're gonna have to manage them. You're gonna have to look at what they're doing, you know, how they're doing it, making sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So there is still going to be some staff time spent on those projects. They're not gonna be complete, but it'll be less.
Right. And depending on the third-party, you may end up spending more time on it because they could cause the issues, too.
You and I've had that discussion.
Yes. Marty.
Yeah, I think it kinda goes to what Joe was saying here, is, the more that people are informed about what's actually going on, these decisions don't operate in a vacuum. They're not, they're not decision over here that's not connected to something else. We decided last year, we knew we needed staffing in this position, and we put it in there, in the budget, knowing that it was coming. And this was even before we knew definitively that these larger-scale projects were coming in. It just exacerbated the problem with what we were already trying to do. We're trying to make sure that we are providing the best customer service at the most reasonable cost, and yet, it takes time. And those decisions have to bear itself out. The good thing is, is Alan and I represent the Milk Creek Town Home Association down on Goslin. They've been dealing with a five-year project of redoing all of their driveways so that it looks really nice. And the good thing about that homeowners association, they're very active, and they, they don't complain about things, they figure out what they can come with, with solutions. And they don't wanna gripe, they don't wanna, they just wanna make sure that things are being done. But it's taken six weeks to get driveways completed. And that's why I think it, it should be underscored a lot more, that yes, we appreciate the new development that's coming in, but there's only so much left, and when that's done, that's it. But our residents are always going to be here, and that's where we need to actually focus more of our attention, because the larger stuff is going to come, and it's gonna be in. But those, the tone that we set for them in the beginning are going to be those expectations, and we can't then turn around and cheapen it. So, just like they had reached out to me, they were like, we don't know what to do anymore. We know that staff is just backlogged. We know it, we feel bad, but we're homeowners, too. We know the big projects are coming in, but we don't expect to be treated any differently. And the contractor that's doing the work is a Batavia business. So it's kind of a double edge on that one, and we're setting the tone for what it's like to do as a, as a business owner in town. So that's why it's completely, has my support, as it did all of us last year, to make sure that we were doing what we need to do, and the commitment that we have to the people that already live here.
I'm in full support of this as well. I believe that the developers and the homeowners, everybody has money invested in this, and time is money. And it's, I think it's our job to make sure that they pay as little as possible and get that project done and functioning as soon as they can. So I, like we decided last, earlier this year, I'm in full support of this.
And just for when they slow down, I remember going on a ride-along seven years ago when I started on council with Rhonda. She told me she could, just patrolling the fourth ward could be a full-time job. Taking care of code violations in the fourth ward could be a full-time job. And we've got one Rhonda, so we definitely can put that person to use, even if there were no building projects.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like we've got full support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Laura. All right. Next item is item number five, which is a presentation on the mid-year reports, financial and information services, and human resources. Peggy, are you gonna start us out with that, or?
I know how it is.
So, I know in, in previous presentations, I've talked only about projects. I've talked about where we are in certain projects, what we have going on. I'd like to do that as well. But I know also that when some of you have started serving on the city council, and you've come into my office for your initiation tour, a lot of times, I end up helping a lot of you with your phones, getting emails set up, explaining what public folders are and how to get to them. And some of the things that I haven't been able to do with all of you is really explain what we do in information systems. So I'd like to take a little time, talk about that tonight. Some of the things that we take care of, just to start out, pardon me, we do take care of all the computers in the city, we take care of our network servers, GIS, network communication, so the city network, the internet connection to the network, we give people remote access, we set up our Wi-Fi network, we manage security, database, backups. So there's a whole list, I don't need to continue with all of them. We also, but I will say, what I'm speaking on now, we take care of as well, the PA system, projectors, and we help every department with all the technology needs. This is just a glance at the equipment that we take care of. I don't believe it's a complete list. I don't, I can't say that's 100% accurate, but it's awfully close. We are responsible for about 240 employees, including consultants like Chris Aiston, who we help, and I believe, trying to think, I think there was another consultant that works with, is it in police? That might be a part-timer, but anyways, about 240 people. We service about 180 actual computers, between desktop computers, laptops that people use around the city for remote access and for other, other items at their desktops. We have 12 mobile computers that are in the squad cars. They, they work with cellular modems and connect to our network and have various other services. We have eight iPads in the fire engines and some of the other trucks that they use, which give them access to incidents that help map where they're going and how they get there. We have roughly about 75, give or take, printers, copiers. Some of the copiers, we're looking at possibly replacing next budget here. I think our copiers are about seven years old right now, and the prices to maintain them are going up quite a bit. We have about 220 desk phones. We help manage about 120 cellular phones and lines, so some of them are data lines. We have recently, recently replaced about half of the desk phones. I believe that was in the past year. Part of that was to bring the network speed up as well, because all the computers actually funnel through people's desk phones. Some of the phones were failing, so we thought, you know what, let's start replacing some of these. We have 24 switches, I'm sorry, I'm reading out of order, but we do have eight virtual hosts or physical servers with about 40 virtual servers that manage different projects, different items for each department. Skipping towards the bottom, we have now 37 video cameras, with more coming on when the wastewater project is done. We do have a large, multi-use portfolio of software. Each department kinda has their own piece of software. For instance, the first one, Penimation, of course, used by finance and HR, New World, self-explanatory police records, ESRI, which is used by Mike, and all the other departments who need information off maps or need assets and some of the attributes off of those assets. GIS also feeds other programs such as LAMA, Viewworks, which does permitting and asset management. So a lot of these pieces of software kind of help make up, in addition to our hardware, our IS footprint. We, from time to time, have to upgrade a lot of these systems. We troubleshoot them, we assist employees with training and figure out how to use them. We do have maintenance contracts and support contracts with a lot of these companies that we use, but when the user or employee calls these companies, sometimes we But when the user or employee calls these companies, sometimes we have to get involved. Many times we have to get involved to help them have access to the system or, and so they can, of course, repair the system and, and help the employee. So many times we get involved quite a bit. We upgrade many of these systems, so it keeps us busy. We do have some internal applications and integration. Todd has done some really nice things for the police and fire departments. The two items called CADVIEW really has helped, helped the police department, the fire department's view incidents on phones, iPads, web browsers. It's really been a big, big lifesaver for them and being able to see things when they're not in the office. They could be sitting in a, in a restaurant down the street and an incident could be happening, they hear their squads going down the street and bam, they pull it up on their phone to see what's going on. So that's a big program that Todd put together. We have some other programs, the utility billing online program. We do the EPA cross-connect control survey for water customers, which I know we can't contract that out, but we had a program already in place for that and the contract was a significant amount of money. So we decided to use the program that we had and continue use, continue doing it. Want to talk about the information systems budget over the past 10-plus years. I hope you can read that. I'm actually having a little trouble seeing it from there, so I'm going to stick to this. But you can see some of the larger expenditures or larger budget years from back in 2007, 2008. We had a phone system installed, which saved tens of thousands of dollars in phone costs and we were able to eliminate a lot of individual phone lines. We, at the time, were doing the new permitting system, moving off an old DOS program that was still running in 2007. I, I hear the snickers out there. We upgraded or added the police records management system. So it was a busy couple of years. And then the downturn in the economy came. So we lost revenue, we lost projects, and we lost employees. And if you think this is a sales job, yes, it is. So the next couple of years were pretty, pretty slim. The revenue wasn't there, as I said. Projects weren't coming in, we lost a couple of people in the IT division. So we worked on cleaning some things up, making things as efficient as possible and doing with what we had to keep the lights on and keep things moving. Over the next few years, especially starting in 2014 through current, you can see slowly the IT budget has kind of creeped up. During that time, we've added the website, which went live in 2014, the security access for, for the buildings. We've added cameras, Viewworks, Seris, Seris data collection for some of the street division vehicles. So over that time, our footprint has pretty much grown. In addition to that growing, we still had all the other systems. So it's interesting to hear the conversation that you just had about the community development department and the staffing needs because I feel like there are things that the IS department can do for them and we're not because we are bogged down keeping our eyes on this footprint that we're trying to maintain. During the month of July, I was out of the office for about two weeks on vacation, which is the first time I've actually had a two-week vacation in about 10 years. Todd had a week and a half vacation. We were in the office together four days throughout the month. I know that while I was gone, Todd spent a good portion of a week fixing the phone system. I'm sure you all have gotten emails about the phone system. He spent a couple of days working on the Itron meter reading computer over Public Works. So while he was gone, of course, I have to maintain what we have. So a lot of projects just stay stagnant. It's, it's difficult to, to see these things happening. But again, I can't stress that more that the footprint is still there and it still needs to be maintained. So I tried to put together a graph or a couple of graphs and I said earlier, Peggy isn't the only one that can do graphs here.
You can see mine though.
Ooh, slam.
So, so if you have good vision, you can see it. If not, like myself, I can barely see it. But the top line is costs in the IT budget or the IS budget that are not personnel-related. The bottom line is personnel. And you can see the bottom line is, is pretty flat. It goes up a little bit for inflation. The top line, you can see the big hits in 2007 and eight in the middle and then it creeps, it, it nosedives and slowly starts building up. So as this builds up with new projects, again, the footprint from the old projects still have to be maintained and, and, and we're really, I have to say, we are struggling with Some of the strengths in our department, we do have a stable environment. We don't really have things that go down very often. Our, our servers keep humming, the internet for the most part stays up, except for a few weeks ago, the phone systems have been pretty reliable. So, so things seem to be working. We have pretty good knowledge of our systems. We try and, we like to think that we're making efficient use of the funding. We always look for ways to improve, to be efficient, to bring solutions that will serve multiple people in multiple aspects. We do a lot of support for employees, but you'll see below, that's not always a good thing. Some of the weaknesses, project scheduling completion is, takes us a long time to get to the end of things. We have so many things on the table that not one thing moves quickly. And of course, unless something goes down, you know, our, our first goal is to keep things up and running that we have. Upgrades of hardware and software is not always timely. You, you remember, I was just here about a month ago, updating Office 2007 to Office 365, which is in, we're starting to put in process. Departments end up having to wait for technology and that hinders the service to the residents. I mean, a perfect example is, is Jeff over there struggling to keep up. I feel that we should be able to do more. We should be able to get them some of those mobile devices that you guys have talked about. We have been slowly working on that and it's just not coming along as fast as we'd like. Rhonda has taken out a tablet and played with it a little bit. I actually got it back from her today. I'm doing some work on it to improve what she's doing, but it's not quite there yet. It's not quite helping her yet. We'd like to be able to get it to Toby and to Jeff so when they go out and do inspections, they have that information there. It's not happening. We would like to get someone like Scott Haynes. We know he's doing a lot of tree work and inventory of trees and trying to mark trees that really should come down. And we're trying to get him some information in the field and we've been working on that with, in our Viewworks program. And I think last week I had myself, Todd, and Mike, so the whole department was involved in, in working on that. And our goal was to try and get that up earlier in the summer. And again, I, I hate to be a Debbie Downer here, but it just didn't happen. And it's frustrating to have these people not get the tools that they need to do their job. And, you know, it's not only frustrating for them, but it's frustrating for us. Skipping down a little bit, I mean, there, there has been some changes in the environment over the past 10 years. Increased mobility for applications, increased security. Cellular technology has made things a little easier to get information out to people in the field. We have a, a larger online presence. We've had to do some additional security updates and of course, remote data sharing. Everybody wants to share everything with everybody. So we're, we're up for those challenges. We, we would like to be able to give people the tools that they want. So that all said, we're still working on, as I said, we're still working on some, some current projects that were here at the beginning of the year. We're still working on the asset management system. We're working with LAMA. We have made some progress with the SCADA implementation. We have some of the hardware that you guys approved last month. The servers actually came in today. We are moving forward with the Microsoft 365 updates. Email archiving, that's now tied into the Office 365 project. So that's not done, but really isn't a current project per se anymore, a separate project. Mike has, has been working on a windmill application, working with Chris Cudworth to, to set up a database and a map and some, some information so residents can walk around and see those items. He's been working on some of the annexation EAVs for community development and for finance, I believe, to try and figure out, well, what are all these new annex properties going to bring in? We are working on a new internet provider, trying to increase the speed of our internet, make it more reliable. You may see that in the next couple of weeks. And then ongoing work, trying to rid ourselves some of our old servers, some of the old Windows 2003 servers. We have done a lot already. We've probably gotten rid of, I'd say 60 to 75% of them, but we still have a few applications on a few of those servers. We're trying to decide what to do. Pending projects, I'm going to try and get through the rest of this fast. I know I've been using a lot of time. Getting the evil eye from Laura over there. So the cabling project for the city hall, that may end up going into next year. I know with the window project, buildings and grounds awfully busy, so we may end up pushing that forward. We have a lot of PCs to get installed. We're looking at some bigger upgrades possibly in the future, future considerations. HRIS, possibly looking at what to do with the finance system, which relies on an old product called Silverlight, which is no longer made by, by Microsoft. We've talked about a cemetery portal so people can see who's in our cemeteries, putting that online. But we have had some accomplishments. It's not all bad. So we, we've had a lot of work done by GIS, a lot of different applications, as he, Mike calls them, maps, analysis. We spent a lot of time on security awareness training for employees. We've added some projectors for the fire department, police, public works. We've tested the majority of our applications with Windows 10 and hopefully, you know, we're in good shape there. So we continue to, to upgrade. We have done some major application upgrades specifically in databases as we moved our servers from 2003 to the current. So with that said, can, can I see, does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes?
So I feel your pain when it comes to staff, so I know what you're going through. Have you ever used interns in the past to try and take off some of that load?
We have tried the part-time route, we've tried the intern route. And we have so many various programs as opposed to, let's say, I know my, my wife works in the private sector and she uses SAP, which is a large enterprise resource planning program. And there's consultants everywhere for that and they all know it. Everybody in the organization where she works knows it. And they bring in various consultants. With our model of software or our portfolio, every department is different. Every piece of software is different. It really takes a long time to train people. We've been looking at generic services and what, what is the most generic service that we can outsource this to? For instance, the Cisco Phone project that we had, we had to upgrade to a new hardware platform. We brought somebody in to do that. When we found out, hey, you know what, we can move our exchange server into the cloud. We thought, great idea. We don't have to manage that, let someone else do it. But to bring somebody in hard time, they end up eventually going somewhere else. We spend a long time training them. It's, it really is pretty difficult.
Other questions? Marty?
Well, just the most technologically savvy, you can't do it anyways because they're eight to 10 years old.
So if you have any kids, bring them in, we'll work with them. We're happy to try. I mean, we're, we're looking for ways that we can outsource or, or bring in consultants to do things. So, you know, anything that helps us move some of these things, some of these projects along, it's, it's just been very difficult. Over the past couple of years, I have asked and sometimes it's made it into the final budget for you guys to at least see. Other times it's been pulled off before. But I do want to let you know that there's more people looking for additional resources than police, I know, and community development because I know that's what you guys have been focused on for a while.
Dan?
Can this be the year that Peggy gets her software? I feel like we've been talking about it for eight years. She's absolutely earned new software. I know that she renegotiated some interest rates for us. She's definitely paying for herself and making a lot of money for us with a decision she makes. Please work with her and make this be the year.
Sorry, with who?
Peggy.
Peggy. This has, this has to be the year. I will give, I will give a symbolic no vote to a budget that does not include software for her.
Well, the last slide that I showed did have ERP on the screen.
I saw that.
Yeah, we are talking about it. Peggy and I actually had a conversation yesterday.
The unfortunate thing is the ERP system is not something that would be recommended by itself because it's way too expensive right now. So I think we're going to try and find some other low-cost solutions.
Budget, we'll look at.
I'm just saying the, the old Apple 2GS, that doesn't work anymore. You need.
We are happy to get Peggy whatever she gives us a budget for.
And then we can all help her with the migration because we can't afford to do the data migration and everything else that goes along with putting in new software, so yeah.
It is a big project.
Yeah, it's huge.
Is there anything else?
I just wanted to say a few words about Howard and his team. I greatly appreciate and all the rest of the departments really greatly appreciate the sincere interest that Howard and his team show in looking for better ways to do things in, in all of the different departments. They don't look at this as we've provided you with the hardware, we've installed your software, now, you know, we're on to different projects. They show a sincere interest in learning what the internal process is and in what ways they can help from a technology standpoint. So I just really want to say thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Sure thing.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this all to light, Howard. You know, you kind of work behind the scenes all the time, you know, and we don't, we don't hear about the issues that you have. And I'm sure any, everybody here probably works someplace where they, when they have a problem with their computer, who do they call? It's kind of like when you're getting burglarized, you call 911. When you have a problem with your computer, you call IT and you expect them to jump and jump right now and be able to take care of everything and that's what you guys do. So I appreciate you bringing this to light.
Oh, you're welcome. You know, we, some, some people think we sit around, just monitor the internet all day. Besides doing that, of course, we, we try and work with all the departments and what they need to service people.
Elliot?
Just kind of standing, not necessarily with Dan there on that one, but alongside, I guess. You know, especially where, where we're seeing the projects taking longer and longer because there's so many other distractions that keep you from actually dedicating your time towards that project. When his department is really providing the efficiency for not just community development, but everybody else, you know, I think we really need to see what kind of creative solutions we can support you on to, to help get these projects moving forward and, and, you know, not see the project schedules going longer and longer. Because, and if you're still supporting a 2003 Windows server, that in and of itself right on, you know, I mean, there, there's, most people haven't even seen that now.
Absolutely. Well, we do what we can with what we have. You know, I know I don't come to a lot of meetings, but, you know, right, I know budget season's coming up and this is my opportunity to speak to you guys. So I thought this might be, it, it, it is, but it isn't a good time to bring these issues out. So there's never a good time to. So there's never a good time to bring up some of these issues, but I thought you guys should be aware of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Howard.
Thanks.
Wendy, is this your sales pitch? Is that why you're here?
No, it's actually much shorter, so. All statues. All right. Good evening. So in regards to, I'll just kind of start off with going through the 2018 goals. There were some basic goals established at the beginning of the year and giving up data where we are in the process. The first one was to complete any ongoing union negotiations into 2018 calendar year. As you are aware of, with our six unions, we have all but one who has completed and been approved. The good and bad news of it, that is all completed, but then fall is right around the corner, and we're going to start the process again. In fact, yesterday I received requests to bargain from the FOP already, so it was, I just put the folder away in my cabinet, and so it came back out. So we'll be going back into that. As you know, upcoming into the upcoming year, one of them is a wage reopener, and four of them are full contracts, with the four being two unions, two for one union, two for the other. So we'll be going into that very soon, in the next month or so. Reviewing and updating the personnel manual to ensure competitive and fair policies. That is a fall project. Some, we've just been able to get to a few of them. As you know, the tuition reimbursement, tuition educational assistant policy has been put together. The sexual harassment policy has been updated, and I'm currently working on the vacation policy, which we'll talk about soon. But then also, the project as a whole is to go right into the personnel manual, so we have had some time to work on a few of those. The next is to continue with the implementation of a paperless benefit administration system, which allows for online enrollment. Unfortunately, we're still in phase one. This system is actually provided through IPBC. So the good and the bad of it is that they support the system, so there isn't necess... It's an online web-based system, so the good news is there isn't any additional support on our end. Unfortunately, we have the system that they gave us, so we've had some, a little bit of some hiccups along the way. We're still trying to ensure that the data is accurate. They promised me next week I will have a clean record, every employee will be in there correctly. So I just not have, I've not moved on to phase two purely off the fact that I'm not 100% confident that when an employee logs in, everything is correct. So we have Gallagher, who's our third-party administrator, has gotten involved now at this point, the last month or so, and is helping us through that. So hopefully, once we're doing that, the next steps will be very quick. Some other projects completed in 2018. Some of you may know I moves. Really, that reason was purely from an employee relations perspective. As you can imagine, being down the hallway, it was quieter down there, but every once in a while on Fridays, it's a little... But also just to be there when an employee walks in, to be able to talk with them, interact with them, as well as interact with my staff, versus I spent a lot of time walking back and forth. So while I'm in a little tiny cubbyhole, but it works for right now, so done, did that move. We've assisted with two LEED events in Batavia. As you may or may not know, LEED is an intergovernmental cooperation between Batavia, St. Charles, and Elgin. It's been in play, I think, almost all the way back into the 80s. It had a different name called Smile some time ago, and it's done, seen many cycles throughout it, the process, and I'll talk about that in ongoing projects. But we currently hold two main speakers, on which they're in two different locations to make sure we're able to pull all audiences. And we do book clubs, usually about a leadership or a management or some sort of self-improvement book that allows the employees to come together and have discussions about that. The employee appreciation pancake breakfast was done in March of 2019, and really what that is, is to wrap up the previous year and to recognize the employees for the great work that they've done throughout the previous year. As you may recall, we originally were going to hopefully do a dinner, but we made some cutbacks, but still, the breakfast was great. And we just got done with an appreciation picnic, and the good news is over, at least in the time that I've been here, and I don't know necessarily, it's my deal, but over the years, the last three years, we've steadily seen an increase in the amount of people that are participating, so, which is a good thing. At the employee appreciation picnic, I think we saw upwards of 130 employees come in, spend some time. As you know, we hired a new fire marshal. We had done some internal throughout the last year, and then this year, we hired a new fire marshal, and he's set to start very soon, which the announcements were made, but he is ready to go from the outside. We've actually had, so far, just all the way into August, we've had five retirement celebrations, just listed them. Doug Seigler and Pat Worley are actually this upcoming month, in September. So comparatively, for organizations that size, the size that we are, it's, I guess, on the upper tick of what we've seen. Additionally, in the last month, I've had more so employees coming in and having conversations. I think if you recall, it's been a year or so, I talked about, when you look at purely our generations and our makeup, we have a lot of tenured employees, which is amazing to have, but then now they're beginning to reach that time in their lives where they're thinking about that. So that does a lot of things for our organization. So it's great for them to be able to move on, but there's a knowledge drain and a recruitment effort behind that. Recruitment, so far, we are actually currently literally on par to hit the same numbers we did last year. So far, we've hired 13 employees since January 1st, which, as you know, it's conducting orientation and onboarding. And in those 13 employees, there was 48 interviews to get to that point. We have had 14 terminations. That does include some of our seasonal folks, so I will, at the end of the year, split that out more in detail for you guys to look at, but, so that's where that is. For workers' comp, we're currently sitting at 11, what we'd call medical claims, so that means either that employee sought medical treatment, so there's a cost associated with it. Additionally, we also track what we call non-medical claims, so someone was hurt on the job, and they come to us, and it's not an OSHA recordable, but they're saying, hey, I did something, I just want to let you know, some sort of basic first aid might have been provided. Currently, we are on trend, just to give you an idea, compared to last year, for our medical claims, we're a little bit high. Last year, we only had 15 for the whole year, but when I looked at the numbers, the dollar-wise, as far as that much, we're trending lower. So the good news is, is the claims that we have had have not been as expensive, or which means the injury hasn't been as extensive. So the numbers are a little bit higher, but it's been very short in treatment, and we've been able to get people right back to work. As far as upcoming and ongoing projects for 2018 still to finish, also, the wellness initiatives, we are doing our biometrics are scheduled into the middle of September. In fact, starting, I think, on Thursday or Friday, we are going to start our campaign to increase the participation in the biometric, as well as the wellness committee. And then additionally, this is just something internally we're doing that's taking up a lot of time, is we're doing a personnel file audit and reorganization. Over the years, personnel files back many years ago were kept in various places and kept in various arrays of how they were kept, and they've been sent over to the HR, but we have, every file looks a little bit different, or put in a little bit different way, so we are organizing them, getting them all, you know, we even have like police in one section, if I, we're all the city, so we're working on that, but it is very time-consuming. So, I mean, an employee's personnel file can be about this, to give you an idea, so, but we are working on that. As far as looking into 2018, 2019, Howard spoke on this as well, but investigating an HRIS system, and then if we're not going to be able to do an HRIS system, additionally, we need a new workers' compensation program. Last year, our current workers' compensation program, which allows us to create our I-45s and send all the information and track the information for our OSHA reports, that system's stopped being supported by the company that put it together. So while it's still working, we at some point need to find something. Hopefully, an HRIS system, or even ultimately, an ERP would have some of those types of features. Additionally, with an HRIS system, if, which I know Peggy said isn't in the budget, but potentially, if we went through the full ERP perspective, they have those modules, so they wouldn't have to be a separate system, it would be all combined. So additionally, there's some other things in regards to onboarding and online applications. We still do all of that stuff manually. While we have a PDF fillable application, but we have no tracking mechanisms of them, everything is still manual, we still print them out in nauseam, and so we still have a lot of that process that would be great to have online. Also, what LEED is doing overall, we've had some conversations in the last three or four months. I think it's always good to review the LEED program with all of us together, with the executive committee, and take a look at, is it still meeting the needs for all the cities that are involved? And we are taking a look at revamping some of the LEED programs and maybe making them more specific, and still doing some overall general speakers that kind of hit a crowd, but then additionally, looking at maybe some specific programs that may only be to, for example, a public works employee or to a police group. But we feel that at this point, as far as really what the need is in the organization and to get the best amount of bang for our buck of what we're putting into the program. So we are looking at doing that. Additionally, I want to spend into the next year growing our wellness initiatives with the committees, with the new committees' help in regards, there are so many different things that you can do with wellness, and as I had mentioned about six months ago, even with the small participation that we do have, we really do see a good return on the wellness initiatives and what we see as far as into our health insurance, claims and so forth. So really, I think it's well worth to put some time and effort into that. And then additionally, that ever, and wanting to get to a paperless open enrollment for all employees. I think with technology, I think many of our employees are looking for that and demanding that. We have many employees that don't see me. I may not see them except for once a year because they work at different shifts, and they're looking for that information to be able to get to them in the, in the middle of the night, or whatever, whatever works for their schedule. So I'm really trying to get most of that available to them. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
I may have missed it. Whatever happened to the wage survey?
So that, currently, we have finished, we've gotten the results, we were doing some internal comparability, and they've sent that information to us, so we're going to be bringing that very soon as far as the overall finished product.
That's been a very long, arduous project. Didn't we talk about this like last fall?
We did.
Is it two years? You shouldn't have said that. I felt better when I just thought it was a year.
Anyone else? Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
You know, I do have a question. This is probably a question for Howard, maybe more so, I don't know. But I'm hearing an awful lot about how we've got all these different programs and different servers, you know, and I mean, this department has got this server, and this one's got that one, or program, whatever. And I know we're somewhat of a unique city, just in the fact that we've got an electric utility, and a lot of cities don't have their own water or their own wastewater, you know, they use somebody else's, but we've got all that, so we're somewhat unique in that way. But yet, I feel like we're not reinventing the wheel here, and isn't there some, isn't there some vendor out there that sells a, a system that has all this in there, and, you know, it all goes to one place?
We have that. I mean, we have, do you want me to speak?
Might need to buy a new mic, Howard, I don't know.
So we do have some of those programs. The Viewworks program does service requests, work orders, asset management for the utilities, as well as the street division. It does have an online presence that we're working on. It does have mobile capabilities that we're working on. As far as the utilities being different from other communities, they also use a lot of the same software, such as our financial system, that, you know, payroll, work, inventory, a lot of that still goes through our animation system. So, yes, we do have a lot of these programs, and we do use them. Some of the features, like I said, with Viewworks specifically, because that's a newer program, we're still working on getting some of those out about. And like I said, the footprint, again, as things get older, they need to get replaced as new operating systems, such as Windows 10 comes along, some things work, some things don't. New features come along, we need to upgrade those things to stay current and give the departments what they need. So I mean, I think that's probably what you're hearing. When you talk about, when we talk about ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning, you know, that's more of an overall piece of software that handles multiple areas. Can do, I've seen it do permitting, I've seen it do payroll, accounts payable, purchasing, financials, work orders. So they have a lot of different modules all tied up into one package. Now with that, of course, comes a big price tag that Peggy had mentioned, and you, and but you get a lot of the products that interface and work well together, but some departments win, some departments lose with the features. The way our, what we have right now, we try and pick the best of the breed, and that's what we've done over the past few years. But as we start looking at the HRIS, we start looking at some other systems like budgeting, you know, we thought it could be worth looking. And, you know, I'm not saying it's going to end up in the 2019 budget or the 2020 budget, but I think it's something that we might have to consider moving forward if, of course, it's within the budget, city can afford it, and it makes sense. So I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah. Gary?
Howard just mentioned Viewworks, and it prompted a thought in my head, I can use that as an example, but basically, it's something that's applicable to all of our departments. We have a lot of processes in the city where we try to run parallel as best we can, but we are such a thin organization that many of our processes end up running linear, and when someone's gone on vacation, the process stops. Because as we sat around in a Viewworks implementation meeting, we had eight people in the room, and this person had knowledge about this subject matter, this person had knowledge about a different subject matter, this person had knowledge about a third subject matter, and there's no one in the room who can duplicate that knowledge, because we don't have a staff of large people. We have a small staff, and we have specialists on our staff, so when that person's missing, the process stops, because we don't have that person's expertise when they're going on vacation. And literally, that's how the whole organization works. We have two and a half people in HR. You know, we have, we have three people in IS. I mean, that's just how we are. We are a very lean staff, and sometimes these things run linear and stop.
One thing on this discussion that I was going to mention is, we are kind of a patchwork quilt of many things, not just our software, but this building. As things would break, we would do things just in pieces. Our HVAC system isn't that good, because it would be, you add a unit here, you add a unit there, you know, you run some duct work, and that just, we've always done things as cheaply as we could, sometimes that can cause you more expense later on, but that historically has been how it's done here.
I mean, a lot, and can I add to that, that, you know, for years, each department took care of their own building. That doesn't mean that there's an expert that knows about HVAC, that knows about electric, that, you know, they might have a little knowledge, but they're not like a buildings and grounds department. If you see some of the things that Kevin Maloney's been doing, he's been cleaning up a lot of systems in the building, from electric to plumbing to, you know, you name it. He's, he's on it, he's working with things and fixing things and updating things and making life a lot better for a lot of us employees who work in the building. And he knows what he's doing. He's a very knowledgeable person with buildings.
And for a city our size and the number of buildings we have, we just now added And for a city, our size and the number of buildings we have, we just now added a person to help Kevin, and two people only, for all of the buildings. Now, of course, at Public Works, a lot of the employees have been doing maintenance on that building, but it's not really under their job description, they just do it because they know how to do it, and so, and it needs to get done. But, as far as the software, our utility billing software is separate from our financial software, so every month, we have to download that information and key it in manually. We've looked at trying to get an automated interface for that, and Todd would be very willing to help us if time allowed, so. I know there are a lot of projects that could get done, I'll put a plug in for Howard, I know. There's a lot of equipment that's sitting there that hasn't been implemented, because there just isn't time for someone to do it. And we are, my update doesn't really talk about my department, it talks about the finances of the city. But, as far as the finance department specifically, we have been looking at some budget software programs. The budget programs that come with really good financial software don't have a lot of capability to do some of the things that we would like to do. So, we're looking at a separate program for that. There are a few low-cost solutions out there that we may be bringing back as a temporary solution, they have an annual contract maintenance program that you can leave at any time if you, we find that there's something better out there. And then also, we've been, Jen Fox and I today had a demo of an online utility billing software program for people to be able to log in, see their utility bill, and pay it from the same site. Our residents and businesses have never had that capability before. We've been very lucky to have the system that Todd wrote to view utility bills, but if you really can't pay the bill when you log in, you're probably not going to use that system. And you're not going to probably go to the paperless route. So, if we can get a system where you can log in, see it online easy, see it on your phone easy, and pay it right from there, then maybe people will be more willing to say, hey, I don't need a paper bill. And that's what will save us money in the long run. So, we have to set up one other demonstration of that, and then I'll be bringing something back to you for that. The other things that have been keeping us busy is, we had the bond issue in December, and we've had that money to invest and track for arbitrage purposes, and we have about $61 million that we've been investing, and interest rates have been very good, so we've been very active in that area. So, for our mid-year report for revenues and expenditures, we're all about halfway in all of the main funds, for both revenues and expenditures. The general fund, I just did a quick overview, things could change by the end of the year, so don't hold me to it, but right now, it's looking like we might end the year with a $300,000 or $350,000 surplus, where we had projected a $25,000 deficit. And that is also, right now, including the Sam's Club loss, that is not evident, but we'll have a few months to look at, so it could change. But that is also not adding any staff, it may change a little bit now, but it still takes some time to fill that position, so it wouldn't change by that much. And then, as mentioned, other departments are going to need additional staff, so that's something to keep in mind for next year. The big thing is our street fund has very little money available, and we're going to be looking to increase the amount of transfer from the general fund to the street fund by 2020. All of the utility funds should end the year as budgeted, and both the water and sewer will most likely be having, not most likely, they will be having a rate increase proposed for 2019. Right now, it doesn't look like we will be bringing a rate increase for the electric utility. And this, now, I said my charts were readable, but they are small here. This, the blue is spending year-to-date, and the yellow is what the balance of the budget that we have to spend through the end of the year. The salaries includes overtime, also, the police retro-pay for both the sergeants and patrol was implemented in July, so it's not reflected in this chart. So, the balance shows a little bit more than half is left, and that should even out by the end of the year. Other items that will have probably excess money, and that's creating a surplus, professional services, we know that we aren't paying for strategic planning, and that was budgeted at $40,000. I just asked Gary about the columbarium that, for the cemetery, we're not sure if that's going to be done this year, but it's still, if it's not done this year, it would be carried over and planned for next year, but it would be part of that surplus. The electric utility has a lot of unspent money and capital, but we know that those projects are all underway, and I expect those bills to be coming in over the rest of the summer and into fall. Our power is almost 50/50 from what we budgeted, so that is in good shape. Water, everything is about 50/50. The debt payments for both, or for all three utilities are paid later in the year, so those have excess budget balance at this time. And then, our wastewater utility, we're about halfway through with the capital spending that we projected for there. This is our general fund revenue, received through June 30th, by amount and the percentage that it accounts for in our general fund, so sales tax is still our largest revenue source, with 32% of the revenue, and 4.5 million received through June 30th, followed by our property tax, and then our other use taxes and fees, and then the income tax. Yes?
Right there. Can you go back to that one?
Mm-hmm.
For a percentage of the total there, what of that would be, that we've instituted under home rule, of that pie, do you have an idea what that number would be?
I do. I have a whole slide on it at the end.
Okay, then I can wait for that, I just wanted to know.
Sure.
Because that's been the talk of what we've been discussing.
Right. Well, almost half of our sales tax is a home rule sales tax, and then we have our motorfield tax, and our liquor tax, and part of our gas, natural gas tax is from home rule capability.
Peggy, do you know what the difference is this year from last year on the sales tax?
Yes. I am, it's the two charts away. So, this is a breakdown of residents' tax dollar. So, for every tax dollar that they pay, eight cents of it goes to the city of Batavia, six to the forest preserve, with the majority of their tax dollar going to Batavia schools at 67 cents. And then, Wobomsey College and the Park District are both at six cents, and the library at So, of that eight cents, we collect $7,261,000, and this is how we have it allocated to be spent. Bridge debt for the bridge bonds, and then the drainage that has been added over the last two years, $332,000 of that money is going towards the bond payment, and the remainder is going towards non-bonded capital projects. Police and fire pension, those are both budgeted for at the maximum, or a little bit over the maximum. And the fire and police protection, when we levy, we have to levy by funds, and so we levy for fire and police services, IMRF and corporate. And so, of the $10.3 million budget for fire and police, we collect 1.7 in property taxes. That means that the remainder of that budget is paid for with other revenues. And then the same thing for corporate, corporate covers administration, engineering, finance, community development, and those budgets total 9.1 million, and we collect 1.8 million in property taxes. IMRF, 700,000 is the general fund portion, we don't include the utilities, because those is, that's recovered to rates, and we levied 260,000 towards that. And then last year, we added 100,000 to go directly to the streets for street capital. And then here is the sales tax comparison, right at the top, you can see that actually for 2018, we are the best of the last few years, at 2.6 million collected through June. That does include, as you can see, in April, that is when we would have received the Sam's Club January sales, so it did add a little boost there.
Peggy, so was it correct reading, it's the city property taxes, police and fire pensions and protection, it's about 66, two-thirds?
Yes. And it keeps, it keeps taking the amount of money that's available for those other pieces of the pie.
Because of all the pensions and everything.
Right.
So, the largest, if there were cuts to be made, it's going to be, police and fire is the largest percentage of that, correct?
Cuts would not come to the pensions, you mean to the other...
I'm saying, if somebody was looking at that as the largest portion of it, most of the money goes for police and fire protection pensions.
Yes.
Which is what our jobs are supposed to be doing as a municipality, protection is our largest portion of that.
Right. So, we'll, I'll talk about this more when we talk about the possibility of losing home rule, but when you are under the tax cap, when the pension costs increase, that means that you're going to have to reduce those other portions of...
And I think that was what I was kind of trying to refer to, that if we're thinking about cuts, it's going to be police and fire, not technically a cut, but money's not going to be able to be there to be allocated, and that's going to compound over time, where it's going to create more and more problems for those that put their lives on the line for their pensions.
Well, I would fully recommend that we fund them as needed.
I fully agree with that.
Okay. And so, for the sales tax, like I said, we don't really have much information on how sales are going to go with this closing of Sam's Club. We know how much we were getting, so this is January sales, because sales tax receipts lagged by three months. So, then the next month, they went down compared to prior years, so we thought, okay, this is how it's going to go, and then the next month, they went up. So, we really don't know. Sometimes, people are paying their taxes late, and it could cause, you know, that maybe this was artificially lower, or may receipts because somebody paid late and was sent to us in June. As part of being a home rule community, we have a reciprocal agreement with the IDOR so that we can receive the information by taxpayer. It's a long delay before we'll get the information for June to find out what clause did, but as being a home rule community, we can do that, and if we didn't have that, we would not have access to that information.
One quick question, Lauren, sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
The newer businesses that are all popping up in the industrial parks selling cars, are they paying sales tax?
Yes.
Through those, so that could also be another revenue source of sales tax?
Yes.
From the vehicles that are being sold.
Mm-hmm.
Though we don't have a dealership, we have a bunch of little micro dealerships that are popped up all over.
Yes, that is one thing that Scott has asked me about more than once, to make sure that they are...
That it's coming through.
Mm-hmm. And so, this chart here is just our municipal sales tax, it does not include the home rule sales tax. This is our regular sales tax with the home rule sales tax on top, but as you can see, we implemented that extra half a percent here in 2014, so we didn't have that there. But, compared to all of the other years, we still are doing better through June 30th than we had been in prior years.
So, if we lost home rule, we would, we'd have to make up almost $2 million?
That's just through June 30th.
So, that's six months?
Yes.
So, $4 million is what is created by home rule sales tax?
Yes.
So, the public needs to know that.
And Laura and I did some research this morning, and there was a community that the population decreased, Westmont, and when, that causes it to automatically go to referendum, and it was voted down. And I went through and pulled out their budgets, and they lost all of their revenue. They did end up putting the sales tax to referendum, and were able to get that passed in a later year, but there were some years that they didn't have it. But the other home rule revenues, they did not replace. So, intergovernmental revenues are income tax, replacement tax, and use tax. The state took 10% of the income tax this year, so that is lower. This replacement tax has remained about the same level. And then, our use tax has slowly been creeping up, and this is, I'm guessing, more compliance for people paying the use tax. Individuals and anybody that buys something out of state are to report it and pay it, and so I'm guessing it's that. This is not generally the Amazon retailers that comes through our regular sales tax. And then our utility taxes, the electric portion of the utility tax, electric and water, water stayed steady, but electric has declined because of the loss of a couple of large industrial electric users. And the telecom tax continues to decrease, you can see it was 491,000 here, and is now 355 for the same time through June 30th. And then, the natural gas tax is per-therm tax, it's not based on the total, on the price of natural gas, so that isn't affecting our collections, but the weather is, it's certainly very dependent on the weather and the amount of gas that is consumed.
Peggy?
Yes?
With the Supreme Court ruling on the internet sales tax, are there any realistic expectations on that yet, projections?
No, because we really have no idea what that is, because we have never received any kind of data. So...
I've seen an article about the state of Illinois could expect a $40 million increase in sales tax, but that's just sort of...
Yeah, I don't think that they're even, that they're even fully aware of how they will collect it yet.
No.
So, I don't think that that's even a thing to think about until they come up with some kind of plan.
Right.
But I don't think we should expect too much...
Right, and that's what I'm saying, if that's something we shouldn't even think about. And just because the state is not exactly going to be quick to distribute.
But it's certainly, it's certainly a step in the right direction.
Right.
And making those online retailers share in that cost, and so, we are glad to see that ruling happen. The one thing is, though, we aren't likely to see any home rule sales tax on that, because there is really no logistical way for them to determine if someone lives within a municipality or not, because there's no way they could have all of that information.
Peggy, I have a question about telecom.
Mm-hmm.
That's based on landline, right?
And cellular.
And cellular.
Based on the address that the bill is sent to.
Interesting, we've seen a huge decrease of TRICOM, because it's based on landline, and so I wondered if it was the same for the city, but that's false, huh?
That's what I've been told.
That's not cable, that's just cell?
That is not cable.
So, that's people that just dump the landline because they don't use it anymore?
Right, yes, that's exactly it. And the cost of cell phones, all those... And the cost of cell phones, although I would disagree because my bill hasn't gone down, but a lot of people's bills have gone down. And that one's based on the total revenue. Now, if somebody had a cable phone, it would be part of the cable franchise fee that we And then our, this is the slide that shows, these are two home rule taxes that we've implemented. The gas tax was one cent here, one cent here, then it went to two cents, then it went to three cents, and here it's at four cents. But we're only showing the general fund. Two cents is going into the street fund now directly. So this same amount is in the street fund. And one cent went to the street fund in 2017.
And that's where, that's where a lot of the money's going to come from for this 20% share that the mayor was referring to last night.
That's correct.
Right. And if that's generated by these taxes which are instituted because of our home rule power and that goes away, the only way to get it is to take it out of the general fund.
Right.
And that has to come out of property taxes, basically.
Or we can't do anything that would require grants by 2020.
Right. Well, that's what, again, that's what the mayor was referring to last night where a lot of these other municipalities that apply for these projects, you know, they just can't get them because they don't have the matching funds because there's not money in their general fund to get it from.
And then this is our liquor tax. I just threw this slide in here because I wanted to show you the, this isn't the projected end of the year balance, it's just a snapshot in time of the cash and investments that each fund has here at the city. So it totals 61 million. This is all cash that's managed in-house. It does not include any of the fire or police pensions. They have money managers because they invest in equities. We aren't allowed to invest in equities. We invest in CDs, agencies, treasury notes. And so the electric utility has the largest amount of cash at 22.5 million. They have 8.5 million budgeted for capital that the bills haven't come in yet. So that, should those bills come in, that's going to draw that down significantly. The general fund has the next largest amount at 15.2 million. 2.9 of that is slated for the economic development pasture grant for Suncast. But what that really means is we are going to be using 2.9 million of the general fund to do street projects because that's how that grant works. And then 1 million of that is escrows or restricted funds that we don't have to spend on projects or other operating costs. And then each fund here has small amounts of cash. You can see the street capital fund only has 400,000 in it right now. And we just passed a contract last night for 1.2 million. However, we still have some funds available for the grant that are part of that 2.9 million. How that works is complicated. Explain it another day. And water and wastewater, the wastewater utility has been spending $8 million so far this year on construction and they have another 8 million budgeted. But that's, the IPA loan payments have been coming in very quickly. The state has paid those faster than anything I've seen paid through the state. So that was a welcome relief so that we didn't have to use other funds or get a short-term loan to pay those bills. And then the drainage bond funds, we still have 4.8 million because the bills haven't come in yet. And the drainage projects themselves that are not part of the separation or work related to the 2015 flood, we have 1.5 billion available there. And then these fire and public works are, we fund those each year so that we can make our vehicle replacements without having a big hit on the general fund. This is our total outstanding debt as of June 30th. The general fund had an increase last year, we were only around 5.9 million, but then we had the $6 million bond issue. So that is shown there. Electric, those are bonds related to the 138 KV. Water, those are going to be getting paid down very soon. That was all related to the cross-town water main and the radiant removal, which were projects that were just starting when I first came here in 2001. So it'll be nice to see those get paid off. And then the sewer, I've included the projected repayments for the IPA loans. So it includes the drawdowns that we've received to date. And that's projected to go up to 30 million by the end of this project. And then also, this shows the year. So water will be paid in 2026. So our strengths are, we have good reserves and cash on hands in all of our funds, diverse tax and revenue base at this time, fairly diverse electric rate base for residential, commercial, and industrial customers. And a lot of new developments, as you already know, new stores and restaurants opening up. And still, even with our additional bonds for the storm sewer, we still have a low general fund debt. So some challenges definitely has been at the forefront of our minds here and staff is the possible loss of home rule status and what that could mean to our revenues. And then some of the same concerns we've mentioned in the past, aging infrastructure, a lot of debt that we're going to be taking on with the wastewater treatment plant improvements as the 30 million is only phase one and we have phase two and phase three still coming. As Wendy mentioned, aging workforce, institutional knowledge leaving. But then we also have opportunities. Younger, newer workers may be more tech savvy, so that might help Howard. And loss of, we had two large industrial customers leave, actually three if we count our market power customer, Rubicon. And then the loss of the Sam's Club, we really just can't predict what's going to happen with that. We know what we were collecting, but people's habits may not, it could take them six months or a year to decide if they want to shop outside the city. They may, for now, just say, well, I'm going to, you know, shop at Walmart. Hope they do that forever, but then they decide that, mm, I'm going to make the trip and get, you know, my large purchases somewhere else. And then, of course, always the state financial issues. We don't know if they'll hit our local government distributor fund for more. Oh, well, isn't that lovely? There we go. So I mentioned that I had a slide on, I have a few slides on the loss of home rule revenues and what that would mean to us. Because there's going to be a lot of unknowns until we get to that point. It's going to be difficult to work on a budget not knowing. At first, Kevin had thought that maybe we would be able to keep some of the revenues that we implemented as a home rule unit, but from research, it appears we will not be able to do that. What we're not sure about, the mayor and I talked about, when we did implement the sales tax, the first half-cent sales tax, it was through referendum because we were not a home rule community. And it was approved and was on the tax rolls, but when we became a home rule community, we converted it to a home rule tax. And the reason we did that was not only to call it a home rule tax, but a non-home rule tax at the time had restrictions on how it could be used. And so it just eased that by removing that restriction. And we also refunded the bonds that were originally issued. We had originally issued alternate revenue bonds that had the sales tax pledged to it. We still use the sales tax to pay it, but they're just general obligation bonds now and there's no legal contract saying that the sales tax pays for it.
So we use our home rule power to save money?
Yes.
Wow.
Actually, we refunded all of our existing debt as general obligation bonds to save interest because general obligation bonds carry the highest level of faith and credit of the city. And so you get it at a lower interest rate. And we saved substantially on all of our bond issues that we had outstanding.
Do you have a slide that lists them all? My head is spinning right now. I'm trying to keep track. I know 850 from the gas tax. I know roughly, the slide's at about 4 million from home rules.
Sorry, you didn't look up.
Just keep clicking.
Can you just click print? Just print this page?
Yes. And so then we had our liquor tax at 380. And then when we became home rule, we converted our municipal utility tax for the natural gas to become a use tax. Only home rule units can have a gas use tax. And what that does is allow us to collect or to direct NICOR to collect the tax from the alternate suppliers. And that would, our best guess is it might be 140,000 back in 2000. I think we did that maybe in 2010. And NICOR projected it to be 120,000 then.
In reissuing those bonds, do we have any just ballpark figure of how much the city was able to save?
Yes.
Is that on the slide coming up too?
It's not.
Finally, we still...
You predicted it.
I could probably figure it out in my head, but I couldn't get that to you.
That'd be great, thank you.
That's certainly also a function of what the interest rates were doing during the recession. I mean, that was...
But without home rule?
But without home rule, we wouldn't have been able to do that.
That's exactly it, yes.
Right. And the video gaming per machine is limited if you are not home rule. But it's such a little amount, I didn't even list it, but it was just, it is one thing that will be...
It may be like 60,000 or something like that.
Well, we can, we'll still get the revenues, but the fees per machine are limited to $25 per machine. And I think, Lauren, you said they're 225?
They're 125 for the site owner per machine, but $1,000 for the, from the machine owner.
And if you remember, that was more of a, it wasn't the revenue side of it, it was more the policy decision side of it, that we were going to allow something, but also respect that we didn't want a proliferation of it.
Right.
And that was a way to make sure that we could put a financial responsibility to some of the vendors that were bringing these things in here, knowing that not everyone wanted those. So I thought it was, that was a really good compromise on things. And that was more of the policy decision that we did not have our hands tied for.
Right, yes.
And so the loss of those revenues, depending on if this would be repealed or not, represents between 12 and 19% of our total general fund revenues or 3.3 million to 5.2 million possible annual loss in revenues if the home rule is repealed.
Peggy, do you know, you know, one of the things that comes up regularly is, you know, the city would be capped at 5% in terms of, or about, or whatever, however it changes. What for the last three, four, five years have we actually raised taxes? It's been about...
That's the next slide. You guys are just getting, getting all the questions right.
We know what people are asking.
It's so predictable.
So we will be able to put a referendum on for a non-home rule sales tax. I'm not sure if we would be limited to do it in half a percent increments. That's something I would have to look into. And even if it were passed on a future ballot, there would be at least a year lag.
I think it is a half a percent because I think...
I think it is too.
I think that's what we were stuck with when we were going to add it for the bonds for the fire station.
And so...
We had to only go with a half a percent because it's all legally good.
Yes. And you can only, the state, you have to notify them by October and April in order to get them to put the change through so that all of the merchants can program their machines to collect the right amount. Other things we could do possibly to supplement some of these losses would be places for eating tax, which would be, both of these options would be a nightmare for us because it would create a lot of administrative oversight. Right now, we have the liquor tax, but the places for eating tax would be many more entities that we would have to be following up with and making sure that they're paying the appropriate tax. And the same with vehicle stickers would require a lot of administrative oversight for those two items. But it is something that we would definitely have to consider should something like this happen. So property taxes, we've been home rule for nine years. And our levy as a home rule community have had 1.2 million in cumulative total increases over years by each year what the increases were. And our biggest year was this last year to be dedicated to the stormwater funding. But those totaled 1.2 million. And if we had been under the property tax cap, we would have been limited to increase it to, by 1.1 million. So our home rule authority, we went over by 100,000. And it might be even closer because I didn't factor in, there's a little thing about the fire pension that we could increase it for certain things. And so that might be closer to 1.18 rather than 1.1. And then the nine years before we were home rule, we had cumulative increases of 2.4 And that was all under the lesser of the CPI or 5%. But what happens, and I feel that it's a fault of the way the legislation is, but non-home rule communities don't have many choices on how they collect revenue. And so they levy way above what they know they're going to get and then just see what they're capped at. Whereas when you're a home rule community, you can decide exactly what it is you need and levy the exact amount that you choose to levy.
Or we could have waited three more years to deal with excrement in neighbors' basements.
What a good idea, Marty.
Right.
Which is where, that's why the largest increase this past year...
It certainly is.
Was because people in our, in my ward and Alan's ward had sewage in their basement. And we said that was not good enough and we needed to do something about it. And that was a large increase, but it benefits the entire community because of that, because we can't stand to have that.
Not the fourth ward, though. We didn't have that, so, no.
No, but that's where this year's money went.
Of course.
And what we're talking about, these other things that are impacting. We have literally projects that can't be done. And we have people ODing in our community because we don't have the resources.
Right.
And if Mike were here, he would argue that some of that money was saved for stormwater management as well, too.
Correct.
So is there a percentage? I mean, do you have a slide with a percentage too? So...
I have a spreadsheet with the percentage, but I didn't put it on there.
And the one I ask is because, you know, the number is floating around, you know, like the city would have to cap it at, I think it's like 5% this year. And what was our actual, like, were we at 3%, 2%?
The state law for PTAL, it's property tax extension limitation law, is you cannot raise your levy more than 5%, the lower of 5% or the change in CPI. It hasn't been 5% ever, I don't think, since I've been here. It's been under that. It's been maybe in the fours, but it was, we've had some negatives in there and very low in the recession years. But for this year's levy, if... But for this year's levy, if this were to go forward, we would be capped at 2.1%.
Okay.
I think the, to me, the really good slide is right here showing that with home rule and without home rule, the difference is $100,000.
Right. And we've not changed, we've actually enhanced the quality of services to Batavia residents. And I think that that's what's all telling, is that, you know, we couldn't do what we do and have the amenities in our town that everyone has come to expect without being able to add those additional taxes that really, we have made conscious decisions to put in place because it's being paid for by many people outside our community. And that's why we talked about gas tax, liquor tax, things like that, because it's not just Batavia residents who are paying for it. And it, this is just, it just makes my blood boil to even think about why we would ever have this taken away. And when people say, well, Rockford got rid of home rule, and you drive to Rockford, you think, okay, sorry, Rockford, if you're listening, would you want to live there? That's a question that I have, you know, for anyone who says, well, they, they got rid of it. Oh, okay. Show me how all of that's working.
I really don't mind that the public does know these.
I agree.
I actually do wish they were here instead of just one person that's being informed about it.
So how many people can you tell?
So, one of the, one of the things that the city has done is we're preparing information for the public. Not only the personal story of what home rule has meant to the city of Batavia, but we just want to provide information in general about what home rule is. What are the powers that a city is authorized to exercise? What are the benefits? And you know what else? What are the controls and the limits on home rule so that, you know, it isn't perceived as, you know, just unlimited? It truly is limited.
I, I agree with all of that, just the general education. But I think we need to, we need to be a little bit more out there than that because it seems to me, all the rhetoric that I've heard is what we could do...
Yeah, potentially.
Versus what this is, which shows what we have done.
Or how many years? Yes, agreed. Nine years of home rule and, oh, this is what we've done? I, I mean, it's just mind boggling to me.
And through various iterations of the council. It's not the same.
Yeah.
You know, there's two of us that have been here throughout all of this. And, you know, it's a different group of people almost every couple of years that are voting on these things and using those powers and using them with restraint to try to make things better and to not to, you know, and not to have to raise property taxes. And that's something that I think, you know, people need to be educated. And I think it's really good that it maybe brings more awareness to what we actually do and what actually we collect in money and what we spend it on. So people really realize that, that eight cents that comes out of every dollar you put in your tax bill actually gives you a real benefit.
I think a lot of the bitterness from the people proposing this referendum believe, they believe that one Washington place wouldn't have gotten voted for because we couldn't have issued bonds.
That's the next slide.
You passed it to us, so we're...
Everybody gets a chance to get told it's the next slide.
You missed it on the last one, but you got it this time.
What did I do here? Thanks.
See if we had the new software.
And Alan, it's 28 people in the last six years.
Okay.
Yeah, 28 different people.
Right. There's 28 people that have, from all walks of life.
And when people don't like what's happening in the city, they elect new people.
Yep.
That's right.
So one of the concerns about if a city is a home rule community is that they do not have to go to referendum to issue debt. The city issued debt one time in the nine years that we've been home rule, and that was last December for the stormwater and the windows here at City Hall. That is the only time. The other times, we refunded prior debt that was issued when we were not home rule so that we could save the interest, as I mentioned before. So if we were to lose home rule status, we'd likely lower our bond rating some because when they do the rating, they like that the city has the ability to implement new revenues without, you know, referendums and that they have more diverse revenue options. So that would impact the, the cost of any future debt. Non-home rule debt has, communities have a debt limit. It's 8.625% of the EAV. And that is reported in the city's CAFR each year if they are a non-home rule community. Currently, we have, are at 50% of that debt limit. So there still is some room there.
Peggy, what is our current bond rating? Weren't we just raised within the last...
We were reaffirmed. We were raised...
Two years ago?
Um, I think it was 2012, actually.
Okay.
But it's AAA, so we are in the highest tier.
Right.
And so general obligation debt as a non-home rule community is subject to referendum. And general obligation debt is also the lowest interest debt. So you would be forced to go to referendum if you, which could delay a project if you really wanted to issue general obligation bonds. Right now, as a home rule community, when the city council made that decision to issue the bonds, it was, I believe, maybe early November, and we issued the debt in December. So it happened very quickly. That would not be able to happen as a non-home rule community. Alternate revenue bonds can be issued through backdoor referendum. Those have 125% revenue bond coverage requirements. So you have to demonstrate and prove every year in your audit that you are meeting the revenue requirements to make sure that the bonds will be repaid and that you have sufficient revenues. And to further bonds and debt certificates can be issued. They have a slightly higher interest cost. Right now, the current estimate is about a half a percent. That can change depending on the market environment. But that, that still could be issued for the one Washington place should the project move forward.
So just to reaffirm for those watching, it still could have been voted for and financed in the same manner, but probably at a higher cost.
That's correct. And it was my understanding that, I heard Scott Mead say today, that the home rule, the zoning for all of that would not have been affected whether we were home rule or not.
Yeah.
And then the other program that was mentioned, and I know that Laura has asked Chief Yule to bring further statistics, but we would not be allowed to have the crime-free housing program.
Excellent.
Or the rental housing program. And then these you can read at a later time, but these are comparisons using the 2016 data from the State Comptroller's Office to compare the city of Batavia to other communities. As in the past, Bloomingdale is our closest comparable, having nearly identical revenues, expenditures, and fund balance per capita. And then St. Charles is also fairly close to the per capita revenues. Some of these other entities like Oswego and Elgin, South Elgin, do not have their own fire department, which changes their expenditure needs and their revenue needs. And then I also provided the same information. Well, thanks to Anthony, he updated these charts for me. And for our utilities, it's hard to compare us to a state average or median because most entities do not have an electric utility, which definitely skews our statistics. And many don't have a sewer utility or water, you know, in DuPage. So we really need to just kind of compare ourselves to Geneva and St. Charles, and we are very close to the revenue expenditures and fund balance, right in between Geneva and St. Charles. And so that is all I have.
Great, awesome.
Yes.
Wait till the end of the year to really see what Sam's had.
Yes, at least.
I appreciate the numbers. Do you feel comfortable editorializing on how devastating this would be? Is there any language that you feel comfortable using?
I don't know what I can legally say.
We're not campaigning.
I think the numbers state the facts.
The facts, I think, speak for themselves.
Yeah, to lose 20% of the revenue would make it very difficult to determine what we could cut back on.
I, I think it's very frustrating to me that there has been a snapshot of our budget and how we've exceeded home rule tax caps for the last several years that was put out today in Facebook that people are jumping on. And there's no context, there's nothing. It's just like, here's what they're doing and here's how they're excessively spending our money. And so I think as a council, because this is going to take a full-out effort to make people understand, we need very clear talking points in terms of, this was a great presentation, and, but I need to be able to very concisely say, without speculation, this is what we stand to lose. And we can only do that with facts and figures. And, but it has to go a little bit further, in my opinion, to things like, because some of the arguments are, well, a referendum was put in place for the Batavia Fine Arts Center and that passed. And, but like, how did we get the fire stations built? Was that referendum?
That was a referendum.
Okay, because those are the things that people regularly point to, that these were, you know, referendums put out to the people and they passed. And so, but then I personally point to things like referendums about removing the dam or putting in a second bridge, and those didn't pass. So I, I kind of need to be able to speak to the past, the present, and the future. And so whatever you do, that would be helpful.
But the previous referendums you're discussing, though, are things that we would have gone out and done on our own if we had home rule at the time. We only went to referendum because we had to.
Right.
The other way to understand this is, remember, this money is not gone forever. It could be made up by a referendum. And it could then solely go on the property taxes if it was approved.
Right.
What would, if people are, what this does right now is spread the pain out to as many people as possible, and it doesn't punish what is happening in this state, is punishing people for owning property. There are all kinds of people that do not own property. They will now no longer be contributing. Those of us that do own property will be paying more at the end of the day if it is approved. And if that money that we're already struggling to begin with and 66% of your property taxes go to life and fire and property protection...
Oh, no.
66% on pensions for fire...
Of the eight cents.
Of the eight cents. Of the eight cents for that, not all of it.
Right.
That's where most of it is, as a percentage. So we're just practically looking at things because people want to understand what are the practical implications for this. We're taking away those things that you have the ability to consume. You have choices as to whether or not you're going to buy a lot of alcohol. You have choices that, how much you're going to buy this, how much you're going to buy that. Those choices go away. So as if a, if that money was to be made up on a referendum going to property taxes, how much would property taxes increase? To make that up, just the bare minimum.
A lot.
You'd have to levy almost $4 or $5 million additionally.
Yes.
At least, per year.
Yes, every year.
That'll go over great.
To maintain.
To maintain.
Just to maintain.
Not to buy her new software.
Correct.
Not to add a position to the police department.
Right.
Couldn't even do that because of the tax cap.
Well, I think what they would, you would go to referendum to go outside of the tax cap, or, I mean, there are alternative ways to increase property taxes now because we abate, I think about $3 million in tax payments that are paid from alternate sources. You could levy them, you don't have to abate them, and then use the funds freed up for other things.
But I think people are trying to understand this as a...
That wouldn't be a responsible way to do it, but there would be some hard decisions to make on how, if you're going to fund the services or cut the services.
Oh, cut.
In terms of a simple message, a simple message is, what I'm gathering is, if, if home rule goes away, your property taxes go up.
Yep.
As much as they possibly can.
Yes.
Or services are cut.
Yeah. So I think that's the message that this community needs to hear. If home rule goes away, your property taxes are going up. That's, I think that's about as simple as you get.
Elliot, we're going to do a town hall kind of meeting at Homestead so we can talk to the neighbors there. I'm going to be campaigning for my own reelection. I'll probably hand out a fact sheet to everybody. We all probably need to do that. We just need to knock on the doors of our neighbors and talk to them. I hate to out my mother, but my mom signed this petition and I've been talking to her for the last eight years about what it is that we do here, and she got herself duped into signing this thing. But then after I talked to her for about five minutes, she's like, oh, I had no idea. I'll spend five minutes with my neighbors, and I guess we all, literally all of us need to do that.
Laura, now, did you mention presentations like at the library, Homestead, and is staff going to put something on?
So that, that brings me to another point. Staff had a major meeting scheduled for all of tomorrow afternoon, and that was to create the action plan related to our strategic plan. I think we need to redirect our, those resources and put together those talking points for the meetings that you are planning to have with your constituents. So just to let you know, there's going to be some delay in getting to the rest of that project. I think it's really important that we have a well-informed public that understands...
The T E plan doesn't do much good if you don't know what your kind of revenue is.
Yeah, if we have no money.
We can't pay for any of the things that we talked about.
Yeah.
None of it.
Awesome. Forget about ever having a bike path that goes along the river. Yeah, we can afford that.
Can we, can we also try to track just how much time and materials are being spent towards combating this?
Yes, that would be great.
I think that will be a great figure to have in the near future.
In addition to the last time we had to go through this.
Can you just repeat that statement? I believe you said we've only issued general obligation bonds one time since we've become...
That's correct. And that was last year, last December.
Last December for...
The stormwater and the City Hall windows, and it was only a $6 million bond issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Hard to hear, but good to hear.
Well, certainly my report was good.
Yeah, until yesterday.
For Peggy to turn around this type of information in the short period of time that she has had to do it is nothing short of extraordinary. So thank you very much, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I have one question.
Susan.
How is it, you know, when, when we looked at the dollar bill and we looked at the allocation of funds, how is that decided? I mean, how is it, and this is not a discussion in the school...
And you know, so many people do not understand how that works.
That's really interesting to me to see that, you know, because I know that they levy every year, it's just like we do, same as the library, same as every group. But how is it the school district gets this huge big slice in the middle?
Well, that wasn't right, Howard.
Control F5.
Oh, I did, I hit Ctrl, Susan. I did the same thing. Okay, Shift F5. There we go.
Okay.
So what this is, is I took the total tax rate that appears on the average bill because there are different taxing districts, different townships, and two schools... there are different taxing districts, different townships, and two school districts. I use Batavia because they are the majority of our taxpayers. And so if you take the rate that each entity has levied and take the percentage that our tax rate is of that, and then it's applied here.
No, I understand that, all of that. But how is it that the school district is at 67 cents versus the city of Batavia at eight? How did it get to that point? I mean, because they have a very large levy.
And because the state, the state is underfunding education, so municipalities have to make up for it.
The, the local districts have to do it, property taxes is the only way to do it.
But how come they're...
They've levied to the max every year.
Every year, and so it's cumulative. That's what my point was.
Well, and one of the other things that happens, I believe, with the school district, and you might know this, Tony, is when they approve a referendum, say they go out and get $75 million for it, and that's added into their budget over the years that they're going to spend that $75 million, that reduces what the state then gives them going into the future, doesn't it? And that's one of the reasons... The problem is for, it has to go in a, a...
For capital?
...construction fund or a capital fund.
Okay. Because I thought that that also somehow reduced...
Four separate funds.
I don't think that would, it would reduce the amount of state funding for, if it's put into a capital fund.
But the reason is, it's more, you know, that it's a, a bigger chunk is it's more expensive.
Well, you look at, what, what does our district spend? $14,000 or $15,000 per student?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was 12, it's, yeah, it's 12 to 14. Yep.
Okay.
And the state, you know, the, it depends on your zip code, and that's why it depends, determines your education.
Right.
Look at the buildings.
And they, but they're much more labor-intensive, too. The city's very labor-intensive, but the school district is, I think they're just close to 700 employees.
And they don't have a diversified revenue base, where we, as a home rule community, have a diversified revenue base.
Well, a common, a common theme is the city doesn't make money, it just takes money. And so I just, you know, I, I love quotes like that. They're some of my favorites.
So we need to figure out how we communicate that information to the public. And you're meeting with Kevin to talk about what we are allowed to say.
Exactly.
Oh, I can't use my comment that I told you I was going to tell, say whatever the hell we're going to do.
Yeah, okay. Because it's common. It's common every day that goes by.
Yeah, I think, I think, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I think graphics tell the whole story.
Oh, my God.
And I was in a, another neighboring city hall one day, and right there by their front counter where everybody had to walk into, up on an easel, was something like we're looking at right here. And it's, it's, it speaks a thousand words, you know? And I, I've often said that I thought we should do that here, and I'm going to say it again. I think we should have this made up.
This should be in our homepage on the website.
The size of a two-foot by six-foot board that is right here on TV every time we have a council meeting or at the front door, and, and let people see where their tax dollar really goes, because they think it all goes to the city of Batavia.
Yes, agreed. They think it's Chicago where the school district, the park districts, everything else are under one governing body.
And in many other states, it's that way.
And you look at the little tiny slivers that are up there for the park district, for the city.
The libraries.
For the library, and look at the things that are provided by each one of those entities that everybody gets to use in the city. And I'm not saying it in a negative way, like, you know, look at what Batavia Schools gets compared to, the facts are the facts.
Right.
You know, when you were just talking about diversification, I can't help but draw kind of the analogy of, it's, it's almost like we're going into a reverse Prairie State where we're having less options and we're putting all of our eggs in one basket, which is going to be...
Tax cap.
Is going to be the property taxes.
Right.
And that's going to be it. And there will be no out, no way to maneuver. So everybody that's always saying that we ought to take away home rule because of Prairie State, which occurred outside of home rule, had nothing to do with it, but if you're going to tie it, it's the same thing in reverse.
And I would like to point out that we have not had electric utility increase since 2015. And we had 2014, 2015, but before that, for quite a few years, we did not have an increase. So, our surrounding communities are catching up with us and are, are close. ComEd is still lower, but what no one realizes is that for probably 50 years or more, the city of Batavia was much lower than ComEd. I know it doesn't help when they're paying their bill, but...
All right, thanks, Peggy.
Sure.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you. Next item is project status. Laura?
Well, I kind of think that was an example of what my projects are this week. I, I feel like my project is to understand and be able to communicate what the impact of the, the loss of home rules' impact will be on our community. So, that has definitely been my focus, as well as trying to provide support to Community Development Department with regard to speaking with some of the developers on whose projects that we've fallen behind to let them know that we are looking to some solutions to prevent that from happening in the future and that their projects are very important to our community. The communication campaign, the Slow Down Batavia, I'm seeing more and more signs. Chris Cudworth said 100 signs have already been picked up from City Hall, and that's just one location, so...
Comment about that. Because I tend to like to follow the rules. So as I was driving home today to and from work, I noticed that there are some people who don't understand one sign per family and 30 feet from the street. These are two pretty simple concepts, and the reason we asked for...
Is it 13?
13, sorry, sorry. I said the wrong thing.
That's all right.
But on the opposite side of the sidewalk, the house side of the sidewalk, and that if we allow just one per family, we are able to have deeper penetration into the community. So people really don't need two in front of their own house.
Right.
Just saying that we, yeah, that we, rules came with the signs, and so just...
We appreciate their enthusiasm about the program, but it is more effective if they are placed on a longer path.
Anything else?
No, any questions about any projects?
What's the latest on Washington, the soil?
Um, so the status of that project is that we are, would you like to do it, Gary? Thank you.
I'm going to go work them out and throw them carry on.
So we're working with our environmental consultant. He is still characterizing the nature of the, where the waste will go, where the soils will go, updating the quantities as to how much there is. We're going to meet next week as an internal group to discuss an agreement, an indemnity agreement related to the environmental matters. I'll say our first review of that agreement, we seem to be, I would say, far apart is a fair way of saying that. So hopefully we can come to a negotiation on that end. So we're actively working on the issue.
Well said.
Anyone else? Others? Anybody have another?
Actually, I have another question on the, on South Batavia Avenue where it looks like it's paved over. Is that the final paving? Because that is abrupt.
Oh, no. That's, that's, actually, that project is still a month away, well, three weeks away, you know, probably from getting the final circle.
Okay, so that's like a, there is really bad stuff.
It was really bad.
And then it's less bad now.
It's less bad. But we don't want to make it too good, because we really don't want cars to go through there. I'd say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but we do want to slow down traffic.
Sure.
And right now, it's not a hazard. It actually had gotten to the point of kind of being kind of hazardous, so...
Okay, anybody else? All right, I need a motion then for executive session for the ongoing litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Ure, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so we're going to go into executive session, and there won't be anything coming out of it.